All right. Thank you for staying with us. It's seven twelve. We're reconvening in regular session. We have no announcements of closed session other than saying that that was the best ceremony and so good to see everyone. Our flag salute tonight?
Yes, Tara Lee's is right over there.
Can you introduce please?
Absolutely. So Tara Lee's, I'd like to invite you up to the mic, please, and I'm going to read a nice little statement about you that your school wrote for you. And so Tara Lee's is a sixth grade student at Oceano Elementary School, and she's been a Dolphin since kindergarten. She has amazing attendance and loves school. Oh my gosh, and she grew really tall, too. She has many friends and is a great person. This year Tara Lee's has been reclassified by passing the ALPAC assessment. We are very I love it. We are very proud to have you here to represent the Dolphin Pod. Tara Lee's, you may now lead us in the Pledge of Leadance.
Please stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, just as we are lucky to have all of the staff members that were here tonight, it sounds like Oceano is lucky to have you. So congratulations. We're going to move on to communications for items of interest from the board. Does anyone from the board like to share an item of interest? We're not going to laugh that good. Okay.
I just think tonight's always a nice reminder of, you know, we're in budget season as well, and we're talking about the dollars. But it's just a really nice reinforcement of the human investment that people are putting into our students and into this district. When I look at the years of service, it's just really heartwarming and that's really what moves the needle.
Thank you. I think that's a sentiment from all of us.
I think I'm going to add on to that. It's like you see a lot of your students that have come through, that come back to work here, the CMR. I think that's amazing also. Just says a lot about the district and the people you work with.
Anyone else? All right, then we're going to move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Martin. So I'm going to be brief as well, too, since we're running a little bit behind schedule. I just want to start off by thanking Dr. Handy and the HR team for organizing tonight's event. It was a really great way to recognize all of our staff. And I think everybody felt like they were appreciated and loved, and that's important to us. It's also CSEA Appreciation Week, and this week we kicked off the week by descending on the sites and delivering bowls of candies and treats and snacks to the group and shared our appreciation with them that way. So if you see somebody who's a member of the classified bargaining group this week, make sure you share that your love and appreciation for them as well, too. And then this weekend on Saturday, I had the honor of attending the boys' championship volleyball game for AGHS, and it was so much fun to watch. I took my family. They enjoyed the event as well, too, and they are now the Southern Section Division Four Champions, which is an awesome feat and hasn't been done in years. So congratulations to them as well. And it's open house season, so Cabinet and I are busy going around to school sites and visiting classrooms and celebrating the end of the year with staff and recognizing all the hard work that families, students, and teachers and classified staff have done to make this year successful. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder before we start our agenda, the speaker cards, yellow and blue ones are in the back if you'd like to speak. Our interpreter Elsa Hernandez, please raise your hand and say hello, is back there. Thank you Elsa for being here. Our decorum is on the last pages of our printed agenda, and we stick to them strictly. So if you need to look at those, please do so. I'm going to abbreviate my comments that I usually read at every board meeting just to let you know some of the feelings we have about how we run our meeting. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, and our staff. The CMR is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Because we all know our students are watching and learning from us. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and civility of the CMR. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on, and the first thing on our agenda is our Consent Calendar Action Items. These are routine items that we see regularly. They're items one through fifteen. Does anyone want to pull anything or amend anything? Seeing none, looking for a motion. I have to ask for a public comment. Does anyone in the audience like to comment on items on the Consent Calendar Action Items one through fifteen? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience and bring it back to the board for a motion.
I move approval of Consent Calendar Items one through fifteen.
Second, it's been moved by Stuart, seconded by Santos. Roll call vote, please. Stuart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Here's Martin.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six zero, and now it's time to go home because we're already at item sixteen. No, no, okay. We're going to move on to reports and presentations, resolutions, and proclamations. And of course, it's Oceano that's waiting because number sixteen is them, School Site Presentation, Oceano Elementary School.
My timer going, just in case.
Ten minutes.
Thank you so much, Board and Superintendent Cabinet, for inviting us tonight to present our year at Oceano Elementary School. First, I want to begin by Oceano's mission, which is of course to make sure our students are diverse. Our students are engaged in the community where they think critically and effectively and meet and exceed high expectations for learning. So that's what we're here to do. And everything we do at our school is tied to our mission for this year. First, I want you to join me as we launch learning this year and meet our lead astronauts. If you turn around behind me over here, let's give a big round of applause for all of our Oceano staff members. I took their arm and went like this, "You better be there at the board meeting tomorrow." Just kidding, I didn't do that. But I just thanked them for being here. So this year, our theme for the school is launching learning, and everything we've done so far this year is pushing our kids academically, socially, and behaviorally to make sure that we have the best student population possible. Launch date was August seventeen, twenty twenty-three, first day of school this year. On the first day of school, our teachers lined the blue carpet and welcomed our students into the classrooms and made sure that parents were welcome, that we had such an amazing year. In these pictures here, you see Maria and Veronica, my secretaries over here, they're here. Yeah, there they are. They helped make sure that day was successful, and so this is some pictures of our first day of launching. On our next slide, we have some images of celebrating our students' success this year. We had the Rocket Reader Award, the Gravity Defined Mathematician Award, Student of the Month, where they got to have lunch with the principal for earning Student of the Month, and the Most Improved Space Explorer. Our other successes this year for celebrating is these are images of the S-PAC that we had for last year. So we added Mrs. Johnson and all her hard work and the teachers from last year, and we recognize the students who met or exceeded the standard on last year's X-PAC scores to give them some time to, to give them the opportunity to shine this year as well. Also, in this picture we've done this year is Kinder Bubble Awards, where the kindergartners who learned their letter names and sounds, they got rewarded and awarded for earning their understanding of the letter names and sounds. Continue with celebrating students. It says this slide goes to Kristy Hall. She's here today. We had seventeen students, I think even more now after the year has been going, reclassified, and students had the ALPAC touchdown. So you see in these images here, we had a huge celebration for parents and students to celebrate their hard work. This was around Super Bowl Sunday, so that's why, you know, touchdown. It's Kristy again, is our Ealtosa, and she's been helping us making sure our students are moving academically forward and making sure our data is in place to ensure that our students are successful. Also this year, we did a lot of work celebrating our staff, and so these are some images here. We have Casey here, our lead custodian, who's here tonight. Where's Mr. Casey? Since five forty-five, he's been here. I told him you're Bieber, five forty-five Casey. Our counselor, Miss Watkins, is here as well, and of course, our Teacher of the Year, Caitlin McCary is here in these slides. Both of them are here. Thank you so much for being here. These are just some images of some of the events we've done. This is just a little snapshot of some of them. You often might see yourselves on these slides as well. A snapshot of how we celebrated our teachers and staff this year, and I hope you all self-appreciated this year of all the hard work and dedication that you have done for our students this year. High expectations for learning is our mission, and so we made sure throughout this year that our students are learning in the classroom every single day. On this slide, you'll see images of Ms. Thornton and Ms. Lucier. They're here tonight. Thank you for being here. We've done tons of classroom visits and walkthroughs and making sure students are learning and progressing. In fact, I did classroom walkthrough visits with Dr. Fawcett as well. You see him here on these pictures. We did a lot to make sure our teachers are doing everything possible to support our students, support instruction, and to make sure they're learning. Here's some images of our amazing PE team as well, and our teachers holding small group instruction. PLC work was at the forefront of all of our work this year. It's a perfect catalyst to drive our mission for Oceano Elementary School. Ms. Brittany McLean and Laura Andrini are Altosas on special assignment this year, who helped lead the charge, and Ms. McLean is here. I should make her come up and stand by me. As I told her I was going to make her do that, but no, I'm not going to do that. PLC work has been such a pivotal part of our success this year and our data for our reading instruction and math instruction. In these images, you'll see our teachers working very hard. Every Monday for Late Start Monday, we made sure every minute was utilized to support instruction, support student learning. No time was wasted. You'll see Mrs. Zambo here. She's here as well, on these slides, working with our grade, with the Special Ed Department, and Mr. Ramley in these pictures as well. This is one of his first meetings this year, our new PE teacher. We thank Mr. Ramley for being here today as well. Again, I want to thank the Board, if you remember last month or the month before, and the Superintendent Cabinet. You approved the reconstruction of the old county library, and with that library, it's officially finished, so I want to thank you all for that. Next year, it's called the Professional Learning Center, get it, PLC? And that is where we will host all of our meetings and staff development, and even invite parents for School Site Council, ELAC. So it's going to have a space where we have a formal gathering space where it's professional and where our resources will be posted in that room. So thank you very much for that wonderful, wonderful addition to our school infrastructure. This is a slide of some of our, am I doing it on time? Let me see. Great, I can slow down. This is a slide of our independent, no, instructional. I changed it. I did the change. I changed it on my end. On the instructional reading levels of our students for STAR, which is a program that we use to measure reading and growth. As you can see, we have a lot of growth in our different grade levels, and this is just until February. So this does not include end of the year data. We will assess, again, we're assessing now before the end of the year, and we're going to see even more growth. As you can see, in second grade, that little group of students had two years of growth in reading according to this program, and every grade level had shown growth in the STAR reading. So I thank our teachers, our intervention teachers, for all of their hard work this year. Speaking of intervention teachers, this is a slide of our program that we have running. We have four intervention teachers. One is focused on ELD and language instruction. That is why we had seventeen students reclassified this year. So we thank Mrs. Coats for all of her hard work. In this picture, you'll see Mr. Moore, Ms. Dunlap, Mrs. Hall, who I just presented earlier, and Mrs. Coats, leading their small group instruction for High Quality Tier Two. They have been tracking their data all year long to make sure students are learning and growing, and to make sure that we are doing the best possible for their future. I have this quote on here, "Give them a reason to come to school," and I'm very upset for Mr. DeChecco for not being here tonight because I have a lot to say about him, but he has a very important meeting to go to, so I forgive him. Our mission is to make sure students are learning at a high level, but we have to get them in school first. And so I want to thank Mr. DeChecco and all the Safe Routes Committee to make sure that they're in their seats and that attendance is going well. We have a program called Safe Routes to School led by Wanda Monson, and in this picture, you'll see Diana Castaneda. She's here tonight. Ms. Romero is in these pictures as well. She's not in these pictures, but Ms. Romero and a lot of the teachers have been joining Mr. D on the bike ride, so we have different programs with the Safe Routes to School. One of them is the Bike Posse, and the Bike Posse goes to the ice cream shop once a month after school on their bikes, and some of our teachers even attend the ice cream shop. One of them is Mrs. Romero, who's here tonight as well. They do many events, one of them, the Injured Veterans Ride. You'll see our superintendent on one of these slides. He has been an active participant in all of our events this year. So it's a great program, and I'm proud to support it. Our next slide is an image. Another reason why kids come to school is for music and robotics. We had a robust, awesome music program going this year with four amazing teachers. We had our first place at the robotics competition for the CMR. Both teams from Oceano worked together to score first place at the CMR, so I'm very proud of our school achieving academically as well. In this picture, you'll see Mr. Casey here and Ms. Brittany, who helped lead our robotics team, so thank you all for that. Another reason why kids come to school, we have an awesome garden program called One Cool Earth, events like Battle of the Books. And this year, we did a trick or treat event, which was a very fun day where kids got to go out and trick or treat the different stations. In this picture, you'll see one of my favorite cafeteria people, Ms. Maria's here. We have a great lunch program, nutrition program, and Ms. Maria is in charge of that, and she makes sure the food is delicious and the kids want to eat every day and make sure their brains are nice and healthy. This slide is an image of some of the student events, and I call this the Mrs. Olympic Slide, who's here today as well. Mrs. Olympic is an amazing teacher and is actually last year's Teacher of the Year. Many events that we do at our school, Kindness Week, Dia de los Muertos, Hispanic Heritage Month, the Eco Hero Show, Mexican-American, Mexican Independence Day. We have tons of events for our students to keep them engaged and want to come to school, just like Mr. DeChecco's quote, "Give them a reason to come to school." We have a lot of parent involvement going on this year. I have three seconds. Parent involvement going on this year. Again, you see Ms. Romero in these pictures. You see a lot of space nights that we had going on. We had a fun Grandparents' Day, lots of student events for our students this year. Oceano is ready for liftoff. We're ready for next year. We're excited for all the opportunities and learning opportunities that are going to happen because of these wonderful people that are here tonight. And so I want to thank the Board and the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendents for all of your support, and just thank you for an amazing year. Yeah, I did. Ms. Watkins is on there. Did I say your name? I did, okay, I did it. Thank you all again. I open it up to any questions, and Ms. Tara Lee's is here again. She has another job to do. Come on, get to work. Again, I want to thank you for helping us launch learning this year, and I open it up to any questions. You can start with Ms. Handy, Dr. Handy, and go on. Any questions that any of you may have?
Board, have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just have a comment. When you first came here from the valley, another valley boy, your parents were with you, and I wish they could have been here tonight to see what you have done. It's amazing, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All righty.
Any other questions from the board?
No questions. I got to sit in on your interview, your interview for this job.
Thank you so much.
Presentation tonight, right on.
Great. I didn't bring my props today, but these are my props, I guess. I forgot all the props.
This is just a presentation, but does anyone from the audience have any public comment on this item? School Site Presentation from Oceano. Okay, seeing none, I'm just going to bring it back to the board for comments at this point. You did a great job keeping under your time limit, and I will say I do think those Oceano cute kids are the most squishable I've ever seen, that I just want, every picture, I just want to take one of those kids home with me. They're just adorable. And whenever we go to the reclass ceremony, Ms. Mayor's like, "Honey, stop touching me." Like, I want them. They're so cute. So thank you for all you do. We know that holding high expectations, that kids will meet them. And as long as we expect them to come to school every day, they will. So holding those high expectations matter. So thank you for doing that. Any other comments from the board?
No, just thank you to your staff. I don't know what you did to threaten them, but it's pretty nice to see all of you here.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Kristy Pham?
Just the enthusiasm that you have and the passion. Thank you. It's I want to go to school.
Anyone else from the board? Unless I could still go home, he has to be there early.
We're going to step out and take some pictures.
I think you want to. You look great in your blue, all of you, so thank you very much.
Take some more cake, too.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number seventeen, Approval of School Plans for Student Achievement, SBSA for Central Coast New Tech High School, Branch Elementary, Dana Elementary, and Shelby Beach Elementary. Now, they didn't just get picked out, only they have to do the SBSA. They're just the schools we're seeing tonight, okay? No longer a stack this tall in one night. Can't do it. Okay, Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin. It is my pleasure this evening to bring you the first three sets of SPSAs, as we like to call them in the office, and thank you to the principals that are here this evening, Mrs. Butler, Mrs. Whitney, Mrs. Russell, and Mr. Snyder. As the Board will remember, the school plan for student achievement basically indicates the plans for the upcoming year, and the principals work with their School Site Council and their school community to identify the budget for those plans and reflect on data throughout the document. You've had a chance to review those, I'm sure, and tonight is my pleasure to invite Stacy Russell, who will be presenting a piece of her plan on behalf of the principals that are here tonight. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Russell.
Not fun to follow that. That was pretty awesome.
We're still excited about your thing.
It's not going to be that exciting. I'm just going to warn you right now. Okay, so thank you for having me here tonight to represent my colleagues. I'm going to present just one little small portion of our plan. Okay, sorry. Okay, it's been a while. Right, so I'm going to talk tonight about a resource called Next Gen Math. So I don't know, I would say about six or eight months ago, the superintendent sent out an email letting us know there was something new for math that might be helpful to us, and we've been looking for resources to help bolster our math program. So we sat in on a little virtual workshop, my Altosa and I, about halfway through realized it seems like an advertisement, you know, really wasn't sure what it was all about. My Altosa kind of looked into it. Turns out it's a great resource that we are going to be using this year. So Next Gen Math is a resource that allows teachers to supplement their core curriculum. It's targeted intervention lessons to build rigorous, common core-aligned assessments and assignments quickly and easily. So it's got the assignment piece as well as the assessment piece. Those are the two main components. So I'm just going to go through that really quickly. So there's the skill practice, and I could stand up here for an hour and go over this. There's just really a lot to it, but just want to give you a brief overview. So there's the procedural fluency, and again, this is at the top, you can see sixth grade, but you can drill down to every single grade level, and it's got that procedural fluency for the kids to practice. Target practice. Conceptual understanding. They've got the domains, games, and tools there for the students to use, and then performance tasks going all the way down to Kinder. So this is going to be great to really get the kids used to those performance tasks, so when they get to that state test, hopefully they'll have a little bit of that experience under their belt. And then the assessment is the other big piece of it that we're going to be using quite a bit this year. So there are the domain assessments. And then this is the big hit here, the standards builder. So you can see the standards there. This is showing just some of the ones for fifth grade, and then it's just basically a drag and drop. And the teachers can create their own standards-based assessments, and so our teachers this year have really used this religiously for our common formative assessments. They love it, and we are grateful that we're going to be able to continue to pilot this program and use it next year. So my teachers were wondering if we were going to be able to continue to use it, so we're grateful for that. We appreciate that. Okay, so the assessment, I already went through that. Okay. So during the pilot, we piloted it for about three months, and the teachers used it, like I said, for their common formative assessments, excuse me, pre-assessments given prior to a lesson and exit tickets. And then going into next year, we have a plan to include grade-level summative assessments at intervals that will help us to determine the students who need skill development. And we plan to do some pull-out intervention with one of our intervention teachers for math, which we also did this year, kind of experimented with that, and then going into next year, we have a part-time intervention teacher doing some pull-out with the upper-grade students. So these assessments will be great to really drill down to target what needs to be targeted. And the summative assessment, and then we're going to give a summative assessment in February that will be predictive of how students may perform on the state test. So we will use this assessment to target skills that need further development prior to the state testing. So we're going to be doing three summative assessments. And then I'm really excited about the Principal Challenge quizzes. So these are just really short little quizzes, maybe five to 10 questions that I can send out to teachers based on the standards that have been taught. And then kids will be recognized for their efforts. So we did something similar to this this year with our Dream Box, which we are sad to lose, but we understand. We've got other things in the pipeline there that we'll be able to use, but the kids really got excited about our Dream Box challenge. They're constantly telling me how many lessons they've completed and wanted to know when I'm going to make their announcement for the top performers. So we've been doing that for several months now, actually. So I just wanted to end, we did a teacher survey and got some feedback from the teachers on Next Gen. And I just wanted to end with one teacher's comment that really encompasses how our teachers have been using this resource. So she says, "I use Next Gen Math as a pre-assessment for the lesson. I assign a problem or two based on the standard we are learning in the lesson. I receive data instantly that informs where I need to focus throughout the lesson." After the lesson, we talk, sorry, we talk about the objective and perceive of the lesson. After the lesson, and they have completed their independent work, I reassign the same assessment on Next Gen. The program changes the nouns and numbers. That's the other cool thing about this. So you can, it's just endless types of questions, and it'll change the nouns and numbers, so you can do things like have kids work in pairs together, and maybe they're working on the same problems, but not the exact same problems. So the same type of problem, but it changes the nouns and numbers, so they're not just copying off each other, and they're actually collaborating on a problem together. So that's been really helpful for our teachers as well. She also uses it as an exit ticket. The data I received from this allows me to see the growth they have made in the lesson and as well as if they have grasped the objective for the lesson. I love that I can compare where they started and see the growth. I also created report card tests. So again, these are our assessments at the end that have been, you know, a lot of work this year for the teachers to create those and make them accessible to the kids so that it's not just this gigantic test that's taking them a really long time to complete. So they use this for the report card test for the end of the year using Next Gen Math, that the whole grade level used the ones that she created. It's nice to be able to create the assessment based on individual standards. We are giving separate tests for standards, but it would also be possible to sort the data based on a standard if it were just one big test. So you can give a test, and then you can click a standard, and it will pull out and show you exactly how the students did on that particular standard. So that's the other nice thing about it. And she says, "It is perfect for standards-based reporting." In addition, I also ran a CASP test prep tutoring session, and I was able to use Next Gen Math to create small groups to assign assignments that would focus on specific standards that students needed to support. It has also allowed me to introduce students to a platform that would look like CASP and prepare students for what they would see and the tools they would use for state testing. So that's another really important component. So one of our goals going into this year was to just really raise that rigor and to try to find resources that align with CASP. So when these poor little darlings get that gigantic test in front of them, they have the tools that they need to be successful, and it's not a daunting task for them. So this resource is, I think, going to continue to be a wonderful resource for us to really raise that rigor, give those kids that practice that they need. And the pilot that we did was just third through sixth. But this, you know, I guess you could call it a pilot again for next year, it's going to go all the way down to Kinder. So we're going to be using it across all grade levels, so we're just really excited about it and hoping it will help raise our achievement.
Thank you. Anyone from the board, any questions? Ms. Pham?
So each of the different classrooms have the iPad then or the notebook, and then they use that to log on or to
The kids all have Chromebooks, so they The kids all have Chromebooks, so they can, they log into their Chromebook. Yeah, so the teacher can go into Next Gen through their clever account, create all the assessments they want to create, or assign the lessons that are part of it as well. So they can push all that out through clever to all the students that they want to. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, any questions from the, any comments from the audience on this item? Saying that, I'm gonna bring it back to the board for comments. I'm excited. Math is important. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you for this. I know this is hard work. I know this sort of feels formulaic these days in this new format. But it's a really great snapshot into sort of the culture of each of the sites, as well as a chance to sort of reflect and align, align goals with the district. I do wonder if we could get the principals overview back, overview back again? I mean, I don't know if that's part, I've always found that really helpful.
The principal's message.
Principal's message, yeah. I also know that part of this is highlighting sort of where, where we need to offer more support. But I also want to call out some of the places where we tend to focus on orange and red when it comes to the state dashboard. And I want to make sure we're calling out the green and the blue as well. So just congratulations, Branch, on the green and English Language Arts and the blue in mathematics. I mean, that's, that's a big accomplishment these days. And I'm glad to hear that we're having these extra support because math is, is big district-wide, this math support. And then for New Tech, the, the calling out of mental health concerns, which is definitely district-wide, but it's sort of, I think we amplify and highlight that we can get the supports in as necessary. No red or orange in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which is phenomenal. It's a great accomplishment. And I know recruitment continues to be an issue that was called out there. But I also want to highlight the fact that, that Central Coast New Tech actually attracts students from out of the district, which is, which is huge for us, this inter-district transfer. So there's, there's great work being done on all your sites. So thank you for that.
Anyone else comment? So we're gonna approve these school plans tonight, the four that we have been brought. And then over the next two minutes, we'll continue to approve as we see them. So I am looking for a motion for item seventeen.
Move approval of school plans for student achievement, affectionately known as SIPSA, for Central Coast New Tech High School, Branch Elementary, Dana Elementary, and Shelby Beach Elementary.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Stewart, second by Ms. Mayer, to approve item number seventeen. Roll bubble, please. Stewart?
I.
Mayer?
Yes.
Del?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Item passes six-zero. Moving on to item number eighteen, Report District Writing Assessment, DWA. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, President Martin. I was reflecting on this board packing and realizing we're hitting almost all of the four core areas with our various reports this evening. And this one is the one that represents English Language Arts. We've been doing the district writing assessment or DWA for ten years. I think we should have celebrated the ten-year anniversary a little bit with more excitement this year. But it's been a big deal. You may recall that when we started, it was just with a few grade levels. And longtime Lucian, our teacher, Tom Wade, helped lead that at the time. And we, it has evolved. I was involved with it really directly at that time. It is involved in the very capable hands of Mrs. David, who's here tonight, and Mr. Gimlin, to be something that's very robust and aligned with our state test. So we are pleased to present with you, for you tonight, an overview of the performance of our students on the DWA. And it's been a great performance assessment for us for many years. So with that, I'll hand it off to Mr. Gimlin.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon. Thank you, members of the board and cabinet. As Ms. Dixon said, I'm here to present the district writing assessment, or what we term the DWA. A lot of people help with the DWA. We have site teams. We have Stacy David, who's actually in the audience tonight, will be presenting the next item. She is my partner in the DWA at many levels. Definitely at the elementary level. She recently joined the middle school level and is assisting at that. And a little bit of involvement at the high school level, which returned to the DWA this school year. So here's a little timeline of the administration weeks. Basically, from February, February to May, we are busy with all things DWA and everything else that's happening in the curriculum office. And they kind of overlap. But basically, we have an administration week. And we start out with the high school in February. And that's followed by a scoring day. We need time to basically get anchor papers that have different scores for them and then present that information to teachers to train them on the rubric. So that's a scoring day. And we normally have that as a minimum day. So we have time for teachers to get together. Then we had the third through sixth grades had a scoring day. That was a minimum day before the teacher workday. And for the third through sixth grade, we're actually able to double-score that, meaning they get a score from their teacher, and then they get a score from an anonymous score. And we average those scores. And then we can basically assess our inter-rater reliability to ensure we have good alignment in terms of how we're scoring that writing assessment. Then we move on to the middle school in March. We have a follow-up minimum day, which we implemented a few years ago. And we actually have social studies and science teachers. We train them on the rubric as well. And they join us for that minimum day and provide the second score on those papers as well. And a lot of reading at that level because they write a lot more. And so we have a follow-up day where teachers get together, our language arts teachers, and we finish the scoring up. And then kinder, first and second, we're right in the middle of that. We have given them, but we haven't had the second scoring day. That's actually tomorrow. Our elementaries have a minimum day tomorrow, and they will provide the second scores for those papers. And within really basically a few hours, teachers will have their DWA scores for their kindergarten through second-grade students. So we're gonna jump into the prompts. I won't, I'll try and go quickly. I know it's been a long night for everyone, and I know there's cake over there. So we can celebrate the DWA later, but we'll wait for now. The high school prompt this year was an old recycled CASP performance task prompt. And it was basically on, should we teach financial literacy at the high school level? And this was an old one, but it's still, it's a relevant topic now. So that was what was posed to students. They were given several articles and supported or refuted the need for that. And then they had to craft their essay based on that. I won't be providing any scores tonight because we were not able to double-score those essays. This was our, our initial year. And so our plan is to provide double scores for those papers eventually next year. And then that would be scores that would then go into our student information system. Middle school. So the middle school prompt this year, last year, if you recall, it was on artificial intelligence, which is still a very hot topic. But the topic this year was, is college necessary for success? And we provided students with a lot of infographics, which if you look at every single article today, big on data. There's graphs, there's everything. So students need to be able to decipher information when it's presented in an infographic format. And so the prompt this year had a ton of those. And they, they basically pulled their information, their evidence from those sources to justify their opinion. We have some scores for you. We've had these in for a while. One thing, when you look at district writing assessment scores, you want to take them with a grain of salt. Every year, the prompt is different. So it's, it's, we do our best to basically have it at the same level. But, you know, one assignment may be a little bit harder than another. One person may think a prompt is easier or more motivating than another. So always take them with a little bit of a grain of salt when you look at scores across the years. But you can see twenty nineteen, old rubric, twenty twenty canceled. And then we began in twenty twenty-one. I have the asterisk there because we were only able to score that once because we were virtually scoring. We weren't back in school at that point. And then we had scores leading up to our current year's scores, an average of six-point-three-seven. And if you look across at the table to the right, you can see our significant subgroups. Very similar to what we see on our California school dashboard. You can see that our students with disabilities and our English learners are a challenge. And that mimics what we see on the dashboard. I do want to call out our socio-economically disadvantaged students and our reclassified students who basically scored pretty close to the average at the grade level. So that is definitely something to celebrate. A cohort score, so as you look diagonally across and down, so if you look at the pink there, when students were in sixth grade, the average DWA score was six-point-five-eight. When they went into seventh grade, it dropped to five-point-seven-two. So we've been taking a look at the rigor of the sixth grade DWA for a few years now. And if you look going across green and you follow that diagonal line, and then you look at the blue, you can see that the drop is not as significant. And that's not because our kids are not doing as well. It's because we're increasing the rigor of that assessment so it more closely mimics what students will encounter on the CASP performance task. So that is something I wanted to call out for you guys. We break down the scores. It's a ten-point rubric, but it's broken down into three rubric areas. PO is purpose and organization. EE is evidence and elaboration. And C is conventions. And so this allows teachers and then also students to see relative strengths. If you look at our scores at the bottom there, two-point-three-five, that's a relative strength. Our students do fairly well relative to the test as a whole on how they organize and set a purpose for the, for their essay. Evidence and elaboration is a relative weakness. So that's an area that we focus on in our professional development and in our conversations with students on areas that they could improve on, if that is the case for them. It is for, definitely for the average. Okay, this is definitely a motivating prompt for a third, fourth, and fifth grader. When we say your principal is going to possibly take away recess from the schedule in order to make a little bit more time. Obviously fictional, we weren't actually planning to do this. But this was a prompt that we presented to our third, fourth, and fifth graders. Sixth graders, we did not present the same prompt. In years past, we did. We would just modify the sources. But we recycled a middle school prompt to raise the rigor and provided them similar sources to what they would see at the middle school level. And this was on, should we increase or decrease the amount of group work? Maybe a controversial topic for sixth graders. You can see the scores go all the way back to twenty nineteen. This is the only pandemic-proof assessment that we had. We gave it in twenty nineteen. We gave it in twenty twenty. We kept giving it all the way through twenty twenty-four. So it's, it's, it's seen, it's seen a number of years and many different years. Again, if you look at the subgroups on the table to the right, you can see similar areas in terms of our California dashboard, our students with disabilities, our English learners. But if you look at our RFEP or what are reclassified, reclassified fluent English proficient students, they actually scored above the average at a six-point-oh-eight. So that was, that was great to see that. Cohorts, you can take a look at our students kind of growing over time. So our third graders in twenty twenty-one, as they go through to twenty twenty-four, growing incrementally every single year, even with the increase in the rigor of the sixth grade assessment. And again, the breakdown of the three different rubric areas. Okay, kinder first and second, no scores to share here, but I do have cute papers. So here's the prompt, what's your favorite toy? And tell us your opinion and explain why you picked that toy. So I have verified with the parent of this next one because I couldn't read all of it. But the last part, I guessed, because I used to be a first-grade teacher. So I do read first grade, and I have a first-grade son. So my favorite toy is Hot Wheels because it can go really fast and do wheelies. Actually guessed that, and mom confirmed there was actually wheelies there. Second grade example, I won't go into detail on this one. This is actually a three-pager. But basically, the student is talking about jump rope and how jump rope is great. And apparently, jump rope can help you prognosticate on who your boyfriend will be down the line. I had no idea. But apparently, that is the case. And they provide great evidence to show that. And then also talk about some different colors that your jump rope could be. So these are reflections from last year. So every DWA, we ask our teachers to reflect on the process. And then we try and improve it every single year. So last year, our glow is we were working on DWA alignment to the CASP performance task at the middle school level. And we're continuing to do that. We track how we do on the DWA with how we do on CASP performance task. And we share that with students and with teachers as well. And then a grow was the first grade rubric refinements. We have worked on that this year. It's still a, a growing process to help our teachers align their scoring and make things on the rubric clearer because there is no CASP performance task rubric at first grade. We have basically backwards mapped from third grade to second to first to kindergarten. And then finally, some reflections thus far this year because we're not done with kindergarten through second. But we're now a K through twelve assessment. And we couldn't say that in the past because high school, we hadn't brought high school back aboard. So we're very excited to have high school on. And this makes this truly an assessment that goes from basically the time that students join us through the time that they leave us. And then a grow, and these are grade level-specific. Again, I don't have them at the kinder through second level. But high school, we're learning from our year one and moving on to improve the process and make it even better. We're looking forward to second scores next year, which was something that teachers were, were excited about. And then at middle school, the thought of digital portfolios of writing. Because these assessments are digital, we now have the ability to go back in time and have a student look at multiple years of writing and actually click and see, oh, I wrote that essay in fifth grade. Oh, I wrote that one in sixth grade. Oh, I wrote that one in seventh grade. So we can create a digital portfolio of writing for students that can be shared with the teacher, but then also shared with the students to see how they have progressed over time. So we're, we're very excited with this. These are things that we work on every single year and we're excited about taking the DWA to the next level next year. So with that, I am all done. And if you have any comments or questions, open to them now.
Anyone from the board have any questions? Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Gimlin, thank you, President Martin. Can you remind me the range of the scores again? So like out of, I know we're five, four, eight, seven out of?
Out of ten.
Out of ten, great. And then when we break it down to components, the EE and the O?
Yeah, so in purpose and organization, it's a four-point. And evidence elaboration is four-point, and in conventions is two. Now, I say that, and that is a true statement when I say third through high school level. It's not true because we have modified the rubric a little bit at the K-one-two level. Kindergarten, it's a four-four. And at first grade and second grade is a four-four-four.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Mr. Gimlin? So these scores are averages for the whole district, right?
Correct.
So at some point, I'm assuming you're going to focus, a school would focus on what's happening with their, theirs and work on their professional learning community. At each school.
Yeah, and you'll see these DWA scores. In the past, we had a, in our, in our SIPSA's, in our school plans, there was a section for local data. And many of our schools included local data that was DWA. With the refinement of the new template, that has gone away. There are schools that continue to include it in their goals. But that's, that's an area where we had that before. And, but schools continue to use, use that data. And then the nice thing is that they have it very, very quickly.
Okay. No more questions from the board. Open it up to the audience for any comments on this item. Saying none, I'm gonna close it to the audience, bring it back to the board for comments. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. I love this data. I love that it's a district-wide snapshot so that we're making sure that the learning is equitable across all. So that we're making sure that the learning is equitable across all our sites. Especially I love the sort of the double scoring as well. Um, just sort of so that an A in the work at one site is the same as, as the measurement is the other. I also really, I, I love this idea of the digital portfolio. It's like a virtual refrigerator that they're, or like the papers get to hang on for their career year. So I think that's, that'll be, it's a nice gift for the families and the, and the students.
Yeah, I do like that. And, um, I think when I was in college, the hardest final I ever had was to take a paper I'd written and make it better, you know? And when a student can go back and reflect what their growth from two years ago on the prompt, that, um, they can really see that, hey, I am getting to be a better writer. I'm using more description. I'm using better vocabulary. I'm punctuating better, all those things. So. I think that sounds exciting.
Any other comments for Mr. Gimlin? All right, Mr. Gimlin, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We like those kindergarten pictures and stories.
Oh, yeah.
And we could have read the first grade writing, just FYI. Okay, gonna move on to item number 19. Report for reading curriculum adoption, elementary math grades K5. I Ready Classroom Mathematics 2024 Curriculum Associates. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin. This is a big deal. We are finally bringing to you um, the conclusion of our over a year long piloting process um, to identify a new curriculum for elementary math. We use the same process, basic process for all of the pilots that we go through reviewing a variety of different curriculum types, uh, with a school, um, excuse me, a teacher committee going out and honing those down, piling those in the classroom, and then assessing them against a rubric. And so, um, I'm very pleased to say that, um, Mrs. David is here to give this presentation this evening. And I, before she starts, I just have to say, you heard about her skills in the area of district writing assessment. She is truly an incredible teacher, an incredible teacher leader. And Brett and I, Mr. Gimlin and I are so blessed to have her on the team because she's been able to really spearhead this effort in a very inclusive and thoughtful and research-based, um, way. And it's been a real pleasure to see this develop throughout the year. So with that, I'm happy to hand it over to you, Mrs. David, to take us through our findings.
Good evening. Um, welcome or hello? Not welcome, welcome to me. Um, okay. So I'm just going to walk you through um, what has been going on over the last year with our math pilot. Um, and so we have a timeline. So this work really began not this year, but the year before, where the curriculum team did a lot of research on what curriculums were out there that could be possible candidates for us to pilot. From there, we selected four different curriculums, um, that we decided to focus on. So beginning of this year, we formed the Pilot Committee, which was made up of two to three teachers from each site, and that was from principal recommendation. And it was also teachers that had served on our assessment committees that had been going on multiple years before that. Um, and then in October, we had a publisher's fair. So the four curriculums that we um, rated came and presented their curriculums. And from that, the curriculum pilot committee then decided on two that they would like to pilot. So we started the first pilot with I Ready. Um, and we did that pilot starting in November, and then that went into mid-February. Um, and you can see in the timeline that we have lots of training on that and teachers tried it out in their classrooms. Um, when that wrapped up, the teachers on the committee then did a rating tool um, where they write rated that curriculum. And then they went on to pilot our second curriculum, which was in vision. And we piloted this from March until just recently in May. Uh, we ended our pilot again with the curriculum pilot committee, um, using the rating tool again. And then both, or both curriculums, um, then came and did a final rapid presentation. And then we looked at the data in curriculum and, um, the committee recommended um, us moving forward with I Ready. And so that brings us to this place right now, um, for board approval. And so pending board approval, if that goes forward, you can see on here, we have more professional learning planned and we would be then um, rolling it out next school year for our Kinder through fifth grade grades. I'm going for that. So this is a little overview. So you can see that every elementary site was represented in the committee. It was a total of 26 teachers, so mostly two to three teachers per site. And every grade level, um, was represented. And so you can see the numbers here. And so this kind of sums up a lot of what's going on in math. So if you look at this picture, what animal is this? It's kind of a little bit of everything, right? And so, um, that is pretty common of what's been going on in math all over California. Um, is that you may have your classroom curriculum from one company. You may have your assessment from another company. You may have your like digital platform from another company. And what the pilot committee liked about I Ready is that it's all in one. And so with this curriculum, it is one comprehensive product suite. And so what it has is it has the screener, so the universal screener that students take to kind of diagnose and place them on where their learning should be, which is then connected to the curriculum and is also connected to their independent learning platform that they do on the Chromebook. And so it's all the data is coming into one place to give that teacher the best data to then instruct their students. From here, you can see on both sides, one side shows what the student materials look like. So they do have pencil and paper workbooks, which I know is amazing that this day and age with all the digital resources. Um, but they have that. They have a fluency and skills practice book that is separate from the curriculum, but that's where they can practice this computational fluency. They have manipulatives that come in part of the curriculum. And as well as you can see, they have their digital experience too. So they have assignments that the teacher can assign based on which lessons that they are on um, for the curriculum. But there is another piece that is called My Learning Path, where then from that screener or that diagnostic assessment, it then is adaptive for students and it does help them, um, learn maybe if they have any gaps. Or also if they're on the other side where they need exploration and enrichment, they would also do that for them as well. So that's what the students' materials encompass. The teacher materials, they have their teacher's guides. They have a lot of, um, discourse cards where it's teaching students to talk about math and how to tell their thinking out loud, um, on those communication skills. But also then on the other side of that digital platform, the teacher has a lot of data. So there's a whole dashboard where teachers can be looking at the assessments that students are doing, making sure they have all the prereqs, that they're ready to learn their grade level materials. And if not, it gives teachers extra lessons, um, for all the tiers of instruction. So those are the components that come with the program. Um, also embedded with I Ready is a professional learning plan. So we have already a pending board approval, um, 25 professional learning sessions for all of next year, for all of our teachers. Um, and we even have one this June pending board approval. Um, for, we already have 44 teachers that are willing to come in the week after school gets out to learn a little bit more about this curriculum because they want to get a head start before summer. Um, because then, then when school starts in August, when we have our Triple SD days, the whole K5 will be trained on the curriculum. And so then just a little more research. So this curriculum, um, just recently scored all green um, from Ed Reports, which is the highest score that you can get on a curriculum. So they, they look at things like focus and coherence, rigor in mathematical practice and usability. And you can see the scores there. And you can also scan this and learn a little more information. So that is coming from the national reports. As well as these are from our own Lucian Mar teachers. So you can see these were some of the comments and the things that they really enjoyed um, and thought were strong within this curriculum. They thought it was engaging for their students. They liked that the online teacher toolbox gave them everything they needed to teach a well-rounded math curriculum. Um, you can see that a lot of them like those discourse cards, which got students talking about math um, and a lot of other things. And then here is, um, from the classroom example. So this little screenshot on the top there is a screenshot of a Kinder, the Kinder platform that comes with um, this curriculum. And Rocky and Herschel are the little characters that talk to the Kinders and get them doing math. Um, and you can also see that they have stuffies that they send out to the Kinder classrooms um, to just make it more engaging for the students. Um, but a funny story, one of the Kinder teachers reported to me that when at first, they first got on the platform and then they saw these stuffies in their room, the little Kinders could not understand how they came out of the computer and into their classrooms. And you can see the spirit, the picture at the bottom, um, is they, this Kinder class actually made a little home for these little stuffies. And you may walk into this Kinder classroom and as the students are working on their computers, they're actually holding, um, some of the stuffies too. So this is as rigor enough for our fifth graders and as user-friendly for our Kinders.
And I will just add in before we take any questions that this is, uh, as you know, the first of a two-part process. So after this evening, um, the curriculum will be on public display until our next board meeting. So we'll have a few weeks of availability online on the district website and then in the curriculum office as well. So throughout this next time period, we'll be taking feedback if anyone comes to see it and we'll bring, bringing it back to you for a future. Back, we hope, happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. David?
Um, on the side of the teachers, does it have like a, uh, maybe a tutorial to help teachers kind of understand how they can better teach, you know? What they're getting and helping them better prepare to teach.
Yeah. So we have, they have professional learning in person that we're going to be doing, but also online. Um, they have tutorials as well. So they have videos that teachers can watch. They actually have lessons from different grade levels that the teachers can see in action. Um, and basically anything a teacher would want to know, they're on there for their like self-guided professional learning also.
So the books are consumable?
Books are consumable.
We're committed to replacing them?
Yes, in accordance with the Williams Act, we will be doing that for the lifetime of our adoption. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
Because I've seen that in the past. Those who choose not to use it, what's the plan?
It's going to be really important for the district that, um, all teachers attend the professional learning that we have set out. As Mrs. David was explaining, we have an optional one pending your approval in June for our go-getters. And then everyone will be coming on the SSSD day ahead of the district rally on the Tuesday when we come back to school um, to complete the rest of the training. We have a two additional times over the course of the, uh, next school year while we'll be doing more training on this. Um, one of our rock star teachers at Ocean View got deeply into I Ready and shared some thoughts with us. And one of the things that really resonated with our team and with this teacher, most importantly, was that, um, I Ready is a great curriculum, but it also really forces teachers to think differently about instructing around mathematics. So it's not just I do, you do, we, or I do, we do, you do. Um, it's really deeply interrogating mathematical thinking and that's going to take some time. And so, um, we're committed to ensuring that everyone is doing this equally. We'll be working with our principals on that and supporting teachers who are struggling with that. Um, but we think this is really a great move for our students. Um, and we'll be bringing our teachers, our amazing teachers along this journey with us.
Does that mean we collect up all the textbooks in K5 that we used to have of the old adoption?
Yes, um, we will be bringing to you at a future board meeting. Um, we have to go through a specific process to, um, get rid of instructional materials when they're no longer being used. So that will be on future board action for you. So you'll see, um, the material that we're leaving behind pending this approval, which is investigations, and we're taking careful inventory and looking at other things that are just in classrooms, because there's a lot of them. For those of you that have spent time in elementary classrooms, you know, there's just some extra supplementary materials. Teachers have a few things often that they keep. They like a specific lesson from, and that's all to the good, of course. Um, but yes, we will be bringing those, uh, as a resolution for disposal when we get to that time.
Okay, I've been there and done that. Silverberg Math Land.
Yeah, Math Land.
People never abandoned anything.
And we had an extended conversation about counting bears in the curriculum department today. And I think we have buckets and buckets of those from some of those curricula that you described, Mrs. Mayor.
Oh, the counting bears? Or you see the manipulatives out on the playground being used on hot scotch? Which really, I couldn't, anyway. I was happy to see I took the fifth grade from out there, which I'm going to take. Any other, sixth grade will be with middle school, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Because in a lot of places, sixth grade is middle school.
Yeah.
Do you have any other districts that have implemented this and how the progress has been?
So yeah, we have, we can get your reports on that, but our neighboring districts, so Santa Maria Bonita, um, uses I Ready and Templeton uses I Ready.
Templeton and Pastor Robles are also adopting the same curriculum for implementation for next year. Santa Maria, this is, we're adopting the 2024. Santa Maria has been using the older edition of I Ready and they additionally are adopting the new updated version of 2024. Um, and so we feel really great about having, um, local partners that will be able to potentially share resources with and, um, professional learning opportunities. But across the state, there are many other districts that have been using I Ready um, with great success as well, which is part of the reason that you see those excellent ratings and the good research behind it.
So we're not the guinea pig.
We're not the guinea pig.
Correct.
Ms. Santos?
Yes. Is it hard for parents who maybe had a student years ago and now they're doing this? The last child or whatever, is it hard to get them to buy in?
You know what? They actually are very parent-friendly. So like with every lesson, there's a parent video that they can watch to know what their students are learning. They, we already, um, comes with the curriculum parent nights that they're willing to put on on behalf of Lucian Mar um, to help students, parents understand the curriculum as well. Um, but I don't think that, I think it's pretty parent-friendly and helpful for them.
And even with the, uh, non-English learners or whatever?
Yep.
Yeah, but curriculum is also available in Spanish and the parent materials are available in Spanish as well, which will be a great support to our school communities.
I can only count so far in Spanish, so that's what.
Well, those videos might help, Ms. Santos, if you're assisting someone at home.
Any other question? Okay, I'm going to open up to the audience for comment on this item. Anyone have a comment? Have to come. Please come to the microphone.
How many other, let's say the top 50 school districts in California are using this program?
Okay, thank you for your comment. During public comment, we don't necessarily answer your question, but we, um, we can get back to you. If you'd like to fill out a speaker card.
Card, so I understand.
If you could please bring it forward.
I want to be respectful, but I couldn't find any. If when you come to a board meeting, you can't have interaction with the board, how, where, where do you go to have this interaction?
I'm asking for a public comment right now. You're giving your public comment now. Um, sometimes people turn in the cards beforehand, so we know that it's going to come to us. But I appreciate your public comments. Um, right off the spot, none, I'm going to just take a gander that none of us are going to be able to answer such a detailed question, asking 50 districts that are using a specific adoption of a specific math program. So that's something that some will be contacting you outside the board meeting with some of those concerns that you had tonight?
I was looking for the, the vendor.
The vendor is not here. The materials are out in the lobby. You're welcome to look at those. And you're also welcome during any workday to come into our curriculum office and look at those materials and maybe ask further questions regarding the, uh, but what you see the, even the materials out there, you could use your phone, you take a picture of that and go on the website and get more feeling for what, uh, we're providing on the website for the vendor, let's say. Does that make sense?
Colleen?
Colleen.
You're welcome.
That's actually out on the table. Okay, good. There's a QR code right there on the flyer at the math adoption table. Take your cell phone, take a picture and it will take you right to their website. So you can really explore all the different avenues of the things that they provide with this adoption. Okay?
I'll save my other comments for the open.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Pardini? Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions, any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment from the audience, bring it back to the board for comments from the board. I just wish they had this years ago. Well, I'll say it's pretty involved to have like the, the teacher's side, the student's side, the, their digital side. I love consumables. When I was a kid, you folded a paper in 16 boxes and you copied the problems from the hardcover book. And that was that. And you flipped back three pages and read what you were supposed to learn at school that day. So the fact that there's videos and things that, um, parent helpers can reflect on and see to help their child, that's, that's amazing. And what, what I really like the best is that we've had that many teachers, that many students piloting the program and saying they like it. And as far as the stu, the teacher that maybe doesn't want to take on a new adoption, the adoption is the curriculum that the district provides our students. It's the framework for our, our studying. And that's when we want learning equity across our district. That means that everyone uses the same adoption. If, yes, you could add a little auxiliary here and there, but basically we're adopting I Ready and we expect you K5 to use it. That's what that means.
There has to be follow-through because.
There has to be follow through because it doesn't always happen.
I know that. I'm very aware. Okay, this is a report in a first reading, like Ms. Dixon said, and we will not be voting on it tonight. It will be brought back to us for a second reading while we do our final vote. Okay, moving on. This is Ms. Dixon, right? Item number 20, Report First Reading Curriculum Adoption Elementary Science Grades KQ5 Discovery Education 2024.
You'll recognize a familiar face. Ms. Bowles is here this evening. She's been doing some work with us in the curriculum department over this since January, and it's been wonderful to have her be part of the team. Tonight, she'll be present part of the project. One of the projects she's been doing has been helping us with a bridge adoption for elementary science. So if any of the board members will recall in our listening tours in the fall, one of the things that I spoke about at our elementary sites is the need to not only focus on math, which is our big push for next year, but also to look at our few of our older curricula, science and social studies especially, and look for something that is easy to implement aligned with current state standards and will allow us to get rid of some old materials and give teachers a new tool. So that's what you're going to hear about tonight. This is it's going to sound like a lot from the elementary teacher's perspective, have new math coming and new science coming. But rest assured, the focus is going to be on mathematics. This new tool will offer some training. It's going to be available and easy to implement for teachers to do. Most teachers, I would say, work on science approximately one to three times a week. So they'll use this new tool, which embeds a familiar supplementary support that they teachers love called Mystery Science to help bring that along over the course of the next year. So that's our presentation this evening. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Bowles.
Nice to be here. So as Ms. Dixon said, this is going to be a bridge adoption to fill the gap between what we've been currently having, which is not next generation's science standards aligned. Those science standards were implemented in 2013. And so the science books that our elementary students have been using are quite old. So this Discovery Education Science Tech Book is aligned to the current standards. It's accessible through Clever. So our staff and students are used to getting on Clever and getting access to all of their digital learning, and it encompasses Mystery Science, as Mrs. Dixon said. Some of our schools have been using Mystery Science since 2015, which it because it was aligned to next gen science standards. And most schools jumped on board with Mystery Science during COVID because we could access it digitally. And the teachers and students really like it. Their lessons are very engaging. Mystery Science, though, is not a standalone curriculum. It's a supplemental. So we can just go with Mystery Science. It doesn't cover all of the next gen science standards as the Science Tech Book does. So we chose this particular curriculum because it is digitally available. Students will access it digitally, but the teachers will have Teachers Editions hard copies that they can access, as well as as it being available online for teachers. And so we did a short pilot for eight weeks with 15 teachers from six schools, grades K through five. And originally, the first group of teachers that we had had shown interest on a survey, interest in science adoption. However, a lot of those teachers were involved in the math adoption pilot. And so to do two pilots was a lot to ask. So we had some of those teachers, and then we had the principals open it up to their, you know, whole staff to see who was available and interested. And we had teachers from Harlow, Dana Lang, Napomo, Fair Growth, and Branch in grades K through five, who piloted the tech book. And some of the feedback that we gathered after the eight weeks, where teachers were looking forward to having something that was a current standard aligned, and they were happy to know that they would still have access to Mystery Science. And it was easy to navigate. It's on Clever. It offers great vocabulary acquisition, and a lot of opportunity for the students to collaborate with one another. And to the biggest goal, I would say, for the future, and hopefully down the road when we do adopt a larger curriculum for math, science, would be to have hands on materials for the students. Teachers all agree that that makes the lessons more engaging when they can actually have the hands on materials. But at this time, that won't be part of what we are acquiring. This bridge curriculum will satisfy the Williams Act, which is wonderful. And as someone mentioned, we will be collecting if if this is approved down the road, we'll be able to collect those old science books that have been taking up a lot of space in classrooms. The teachers will be happy about that. And then they'll just have their science, their Teachers Editions in the classroom, and then everything else digital on the Chromebooks. Are there any questions?
Anyone from the board have questions? Ms. Andy?
So when it comes, when it comes to the science, there's a lot of, I don't know, trials and, you know, like, you know, doing temples, things like that. I'm just thinking like high school. When K through five, are we going to do samples of that? And then they get to interact to do that? Or it's just going to be just show? Is that what it means by material?
Well, yes. And, you know, especially elementary teachers, they they are big collectors of things. So they can they'll gather the things. Sometimes PTAs will put in some money towards gathering those materials. But, you know, like the standard, when you're learning about eruptions, and you get to do the volcano with the baking soda and the water, those kind of things that kids are get really engaged in. And when kids can do the hands on things, it's it really, I think it sticks in their memories more. But they, this is an awesome program. They can take virtual field trips. They can do things as a whole group. They can teachers can model lessons. And it is just a bridge. So eventually, down the line, we'll get the whole. Yeah, with a different program and kind of like the math adoption was rolled out. This was just something to bridge that gap.
Anyone else have questions? I'm going to open up to the audience for public comment on this item. This is a first reading of a curriculum adoption for elementary science grade K five. Did anyone from the audience want to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comments. I think. Ms. Santos? When kids see, because I still have stuff from when the space shuttle went up and the man on the moon, and to have your grandkids look at this and say, what's this? This is how it all started, you know, and from there, look at the things that are happening. And because of science that was taken care of back then, and it just grows and grows and grows. So the more you learn by doing these things. So and it's even like, since when did we have the the robots? Now, kids didn't know about that, but they do now because of science and learning math. Everything goes with it. So you guys are doing a fabulous job. Any other questions?
I I just want to
Ms. Kendall?
Comment that when I was a teacher, I was on textbook adoption committee. And so I know what goes into these curricular adoption. Of course, I was at the high school level. So we're looking more at a series of courses rather than a broad curriculum like this. But the the curriculum we look at, of course, has to be approved by the State Department of Education. And so we're looking at, we're not randomly picking, you know, a book that has nice pictures in it. And and what's most important is the teachers are the experts in teaching these subjects in the classroom. And so the fact that the teachers are so engaged in in piloting, in choosing, in debating, you know, one curriculum over another, I feel really confident about this process. So I appreciate the work you do and the work our teachers do.
Thank you for helping us out. I I like the price tag. I like the fact that the teacher is still going to get a hard copy book that she can go through and say, I can do this lesson. I have an hour and a half on Thursday. I'm going to devote it to science, and we're going to do this independent lesson. But then the kids can log in, you know, get on Clever, see that, see the process, what what she's asking of them. And that can be kind of a tool as whatever they're, you know, planting a pumpkin seed in a Dixie cup or whatever the 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 project might be. So it's a great way to, like you said, it's a bridge. It's a bridge. It's not the end all for our science adoption. It's a bridge to the bigger thing. So it brings us more up to date. So I think that's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a report first reading, so we're not going to be taking a vote. It's a curriculum adoption for elementary science grades K through five. We'll see it again next time. Thank you. Item number 21, Second Reading, Initial Proposal for Collective Bargaining from Luciemar Unified School District Teachers Association to Luciemar Unified School District for 2425 Negotiations. Ms. Handy?
Thank you, President Martin. The RADA Act requires that in employer employee relations and bargaining, that each party present its proposal and have the give the public an opportunity to review it. This, as you said, is the second opportunity. The Luciemar Unified Teachers Association presented its initial proposal, or I did on their behalf on May 7. There were no comments from the public made at that session. This memo serves as the second reading. LMUTA's proposal is attached to this memo. There is no action requested of the board, only public comment should there be any.
Does anyone from the board have questions for Dr. Handy? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Does anyone in the public have comment on this item? Come forward, please.
So the only comment I have is just that where does one go see the documents so that it can be read so that they can make any meaningful comments to the proposal? Where where would someone like myself be able to go to read that?
You could go to Luciemar Unified School District website, go to District Board of Education, Agendas and packets, 2024 packet, and then you go through it, and it lines up all 400 pages, I think it was today. And you could see each agenda. First, you can see the agenda, then you could see each agenda item separately.
Right. But for for like today's meeting, if I wanted to look at that last week or two weeks ago, so I would have time to read a 400 page document, how do I do that?
We don't have it available two weeks ahead of time. Okay, we have it available the Friday before the meeting. So the Friday before the Tuesday meeting. And you would go on the website to do that. You could always come to the district office and ask to look for a print copy if you wanted to. But you can you or the library has computers. You could go there to the library if you don't have a device to look for it there. But it's very, it goes to District Board of Education, Agendas and packets. It's right there. I did it today.
President Martin, is he asking about our agenda? Or is he asking about in particular the contract and these items on this?
Are you asking specifically about this item or all sorts of items that would be on our agenda?
Well, obviously, I would want to look at the agenda items, and then those that were of interest to me do have adequate time to do, you know, research.
Correct.
So that when I come, I can make, you know, a contribution rather than just rhetoric.
Right. So they're, like I said, they're available Friday afternoon on the website by five. That's when we get our board packets delivered to our homes. That's when we can go on the website to see it. And part of being on the school board is we do spend a good part of our weekend, the weekend before a board meeting, reading our board packets.
So that will have the details, what the
Each agenda item has pages underneath it. So like tonight, the agenda item would have like the PowerPoints and stuff that were shared tonight is been printed as part of the agenda packet. Okay, I think you'll learn a lot by just going through each agenda item and looking at them.
An old guy like me needs a reeducation now and
Well, I sat in the audience for 10 years before I was on the school board.
I'd be happy to sit down with you too, sir, in my office, and we can go over it together.
Okay, so number 21, we were on. I'm going to close it to public comment and bring it back to the board for any comments on item 21, the initial proposal from LMUTA. From Luciemar, too. No from LMUTA?
From the teachers. So this is the initial proposal from the Luciemar Unified Teachers Association.
No motion required. This is just information item only. Okay, item number 22. Approval Contract Agreement with Cisco Ventura Inc. for frozen refrigerated chemical paper and dry processed commodity and/or commercial food products for fiscal year 2004, 2005. Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you, President Martin. Before you this evening, I'm going to take it back step. You might go 11 districts in San Luis and Santa Barbara County. That co op seems kind of big. It's huge. It goes all the way south to Orchid and Guadalupe, and all the way north to Paso and San Miguel, meaning we are in the middle of this co op. And all 11 districts come together this particular cycle. Ms. Laurel Goine was the person who is in charge of organizing the request for proposal that went out to bid for all of the districts as part of that group, meaning we get the best pricing because we're coming together as a co op that is buying all of our food stuff, or I should say, the majority of our food stuff together. As you can see, we did receive three bids, two of which that were fully responsive. And this evening, we would like to ask for the board to approve a bid with Cisco, which was the most economically or fiscally responsible of the responsive bids, meaning it was 822,000 less than the next responsive bid. And the caveat, I'd put a little asterisk there, is with these bids, it's it's based on commodity pricing, and those will fluctuate as the market fluctuates. But ultimately, it is the best value, which is in fact, the highest ranking criteria that was part of the bidding process.
All right. Does anyone on the board have questions for Mr. Eichberger about this purchasing co op? I just have a silly little question. When I looked at the information here, it has a Tazca de and Guadalupe, the same same zip code.
Oh, that was just an error.
Just an error.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions?
How long has this co op been?
Oh, just a couple of years.
I'm going to defer. We'll be able to answer a few more of those questions.
Good evening. I started a co op when I came to the district in 2016, 2017.
All right. Okay, EC before COVID. Okay, so it's been around for a while, eight years. We're looking at eight years. Well done.
Thank you.
All right. And no questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Does anyone in the public like to comment on this item regarding approval contract agreement with Cisco Ventura, Inc. for frozen refrigerated chemical paper and dry processed commodity and/or commercial food products? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience and bring it back to the board for comment. Any comment? All right, then I'm looking for a motion.
Move Approval Contract Agreement with Cisco Ventura, Inc. for frozen refrigerated chemical paper and dry processed commodity and/or commercial food products for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second. It's been moved by Stuart, second by Santos. Roll call vote, please. Stuart?
Aye.
Santos? Yes. Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Six oh. Well done. Thank you. Okay, item number 23, Action Student Expulsion, Student Discipline Cases Number 23 dash 24 dash 041, 23 dash 24 dash 042, and 23 24 dash 044, and 23 dash 24 dash 045. And just for clarification, you will never see paperwork in our agenda regarding student see paperwork in our agenda regarding student discipline, because student discipline is confidential.
I would like to move approval of the agreements and stipulations for immediate expulsion with suspended enforcement. The Board of Education finds there is cause to expel from all schools in the district student cases number 23-24-041 for violation of Education Code Section 48900C, number 23-24-042 for violation of Education Code Section 48900A1 and 489004, case number 23-24-044 for violation of Education Education Code Section 48900A1 and 48900.4, and case number 23-24-045 for violation of Education Code Section 48900A1 and 48900.4. It is further moved that the board adopt the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plans, and readmission review dates as set forth in the May 6, 2024, May 9, 2024, and May 13, 2024 agreements and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Second. It's been moved by Candell, second by Santos, to approve the student discipline. Roll call vote, please. Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes six zero. We've come to the part of our meeting where we take public comment on items not on the agenda. This is a place where you have three minutes to discuss something under the purview of the school district and of the board. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium.
Letting me come back up. I did have one request, because Superintendent Fawcett, at the last meeting, you said you were going to contact me, and I never heard from anybody from your office.
I called the number twice that you left on your blue card. It went to a business?
Then you, either I wrote the wrong number down, or you couldn't read my writing, which could be true. All right. One of the things that I wanted to bring up, some of them you've been kind enough to ask before, was learning how better to interact and get information. I did have a comment on some of the curriculum, and that is, I was appalled by the number of absentees, percentage of absenteeism within the district. I know when I went to school, there was no question you went to school. And then when I thought about the presentation about the adoption of the new curricula and talked about videos for the parents and all, I said, is there a component in there, there should be a component in there, that measures the efficacy of the parent participation of looking at those videos, looking at those plans that the teachers have and the student workbooks, to verify that all the work that the teachers are doing and the district is doing, that the parents are holding their end of the bargain by reviewing it? Because if they don't ever look at it, then the efficacy of the program, I think, is going to be dramatically diminished, and that, I think, is shown by the absenteeism and the disciplinary actions that are needed across the board in the district. As a person, I have no way to evaluate the scoring system, but to me, when I went to school, if you had 60%, you weren't even close to passing. For me, a C was a 75. So when I see a score of 4, 4, and 2, and I see an average score of 6.2, I don't know whether that means a good score or a bad score. So again, maybe all this information's on the board, on the school site, the school district site, but for somebody like myself, we need to get educated, all right, here are the tools you have that you can go and start making your own assessment of how well we're doing, so that when you come to give feedback, you know, it's appropriate. I don't know how to answer those things. So I appreciate you giving, like, you know, had two MOUs on today's agenda, and then asked for public comment. Well, without knowing what was in the MOU, how can I make a comment? So that's why I was asking about how to get prior visibility to what's on the agenda, so that, and that's pretty much it, you know. I am, I know you have a very difficult job. My sister was a teacher for 45 years, preschool through second grade, but I really struggled personally with the fact that the NICE report rates this district as number 125 in the state, and yet, reading on grade is 15% and mathematics is 10% according to the state and the state assessments. And I'm going, well, how is that considered a good performing school? Made it this time.
Thank you. All righty. That's it for tonight. It's been a long day. Our next regular school board meeting is June 11th, right here, same time, same channel. We will see you then. Thank you all for being here.